We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And before we, well, actually, I'm not calling the meeting to order. We're gonna have a public hearing first, and then I'll call the meeting to order. But at this time, we'll have our public hearing regarding the property out on County Highway 42. And it's been requested that that property be rezoned from an R1 residential to a R4, which would allow a mobile home. So, at this time, I'll open the floor for any discussion with a public hearing.
I'd like to know how. Go ahead.
For those who don't know me, my name is Tim Peoples. I live next door to the property in general. And I'm requesting that if there's not gonna be any opposition to that mobile home coming in, that I be granting the same status. So, where I can, I can put a mobile home on my land for my kids for future use. The land's been in my family now for nearly 70 years. And if the city grants that for the property next to mine, then they should be able to grant that to me also.
There's a process that we go through. The council will have the final say on that. But we have a planning commission. And any requests that you have to change zoning that's in place right now. If your property is zoned in R1, which I'm hearing you say that it is, and you want permission to have a mobile home there, you would need to take your property description and meet with the planning commission. And they would review your case, and they take it on a case-by-case basis. And they make a recommendation to the council. The council reviews, reviews it, and we can either approve it or disapprove it. Now, in most cases, we try to work with the planning commission, especially if it's unanimous. But that's not saying that we would. But you would need to go to the planning commission first with your request.
The body of that commission, I mean, just wanna come to a vote. So, apparently, the planning commission did approve of the said property that's going for a vote tonight. Talking about the mobile home on the property next to mine?
The one that's already there? He did meet with the planning commission, but it was after the mobile home was already there.
Yes, but the planning commission, did they approve of that mobile home?
The planning commission has approved it, yes.
Okay, so we live in the same community, so is it safe to say that they should also approve of mine?
Well, they'll take that on a case-by-case basis. If there's, you know, my opposition in that area, they would certainly consider it, I would say. But I can't tell you what they would do.
How far in the future are you talking about your child moving in? Just for a second discussion. Right away, or is this, or is this, you have young children, this might be in the future?
Five years.
Is it the same rights as everybody else? Is the owner of this property here that we're talking about?
Yes.
And you're who?
I'm David Tuck.
Okay. How much land are you talking about out there? Where this mobile home is?
It's on about a half acre of land.
About a half acre of land?
Yeah, and it'll be the only one on my property. It won't stay there too long. My mom and dad currently live in it. They're both in their 70s. And when they're no longer here, then it'll be moved.
Well, explain to me how this situation came about regarding all of this, if you don't mind.
Sure.
See, I'm just kind of new coming up.
I've been, I lived in Happelburg, and I lost my house to the tornado over there. I bought this property back in May of last year. And my mom and dad's house burnt approximately September, late September, early October. And I called-
2011. 2011.
Yes. And I called City Hall to see if we could set a mobile home up there on that site, since one was there previously, me purchasing the land. And they said, as long as one sat there before, I could set another one in there. So, I did. And then I received a letter in the mail saying it was being challenged. So, I went before the zoning commission. But I put it up there for my mom and dads, 'cause their house burnt down, and there just isn't enough funds to rebuild them another house.
Can you tell me who told you?
No, ma'am, I can't. That was, that was back before Thanksgiving, a week or two before Thanksgiving, right in that area.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to say?
Now, when is the next planning commission or meeting?
It meets on the third Monday night, Jan. Fourth Monday night, would be fourth Monday night. At City Hall. And they're meeting that conference room on the other end.
Susan Rice?
Yeah.
I own property down the road, just a piece on the same, in the same community there. Parcel, according to the parcel number, there's 17 acres there. It will be rezoned.
Well, I wasn't asking for 17 acres, 'cause-
But that's the way the City Council has it worded in their chat.
They can, they can change it to the half acre. It's not gonna go beyond where it's at. There's no need for that.
And you don't, you don't want 17 acres zoned, do you?
No, ma'am.
This is the description you brought to the planning commission. That's why it's worded this way. So, if you're requesting that just that property where the mobile home is sitting be rezoned, then that needs to be changed.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking for.
You got this, I got it.
That's all I'm asking for. There's nothing gonna be done.
Scott, would that require survey?
I think we might would need a, 'cause the only thing in front of us is that particular parcel. And we would need at least some kind of description of that half acre or just a half acre, so we'd know what, which piece of land it is that we are rezoning.
So, if you could provide us with that, that, the property where that mobile home is sitting, then I think it would be helpful. Could be operated that carefully. 'Cause this range to rezon the 107 acres.
Can you all even act now about that description?
I think what's in front of the council would have to be that-
Pardon?
I think the only thing that's in front of the council would be that entire parcel.
No, we'll have to wait. We'll have to wait.
We can take it.
You'll give us that other description? And will it have to go back and forth to the planning commission? It probably won't, will it, since they approved?
Yeah, I think we can amend it to an eric dam dog.
And what was your name? Peoples?
Tim Peoples.
Tim Peoples. And you know, this situation right here, you know, I think you have to take every situation and use common sense. And this man has got a hardship case. And I'm sympathetic to that. Now, whether or not the rest of you are or not, I don't know. I, I understand what you're saying. And above all, I want to be fair. And he's exactly right. So, how would you feel if you were sitting up here and you asked this to elderly people to move off of this and, and have a smear on your face that you didn't have one bit care for these elderly human beings when they get picked on enough?
First of all, ma'am, I'm not, I'm not taking-
Well, he, well, some people do. And I'm not pointing at you, Tim. He thought he was doing the right thing. And I honestly believe the man. He has no reason to lie.
I, I, I don't understand this, I don't understand his comments. Mr. Tuck has been an asset to our community. I am saw, I'm deeply sorry for his losses and his family's losses.
Well, I understand.
But then again, you know, by the, I mean, if you talk about hardship, hardship is if I lost my house, or, or if the property owner loses their house, and then they have to put in a mobile home until they can get their, their, their built, their house and whatever redone. This is doing well.
I think we have another issue here, in my opinion. I was not here at the time. But I believe someone from this office did tell him that it would be okay if there was a mobile home sitting there before. And I believe that's the way our ordinance reads, Scott, that if there was a mobile home there before, that we are permitted to allow another one to go in. So, you know-
Does it cover the home?
I believe Mr. Tuck, when he said, he asked that question before he moved that mobile home in there. So, that puts another, I think, more consideration on our part because of that, because some representative from the city, and we don't know who that was.
There's, there's not too many representatives in the city.
Well, some of them are not on the here.
They're not on the here.
Some of them are not on the here.
But, you know, I understand that. I mean, yes, the, my brother's the one who put the first mobile home in up there. That was 18 years ago or so, give or take. But you gotta also consider that the land that I'm on has been in my family's name for nearly 70 years. My grandpa bought it in the mid-'40s, and there's no consideration for that.
I wonder if this nitpicking about every little issue would end here if we just told Mr. Tuck to move the mobile home, to move his folks?
Ma'am, I'm not asking for that. I'm not asking for that. All I'm asking for is consideration for my land.
I don't know of anybody that says that.
Alvin never asked that.
Well, let me say this, and I said it earlier. I am sure, I know every person on that planning commission. I am sure, at the time, when, when he gets here, that your child needs a place to live, and you need something rezoned, they would take that under serious consideration. We can't do it now.
Yes, yes. The reason why I'm here is because this issue was brought up, and if there's no opposition in the community for that mobile home, then it should be, there should not be any opposition in the community for myself or for my request. I, I don't know how, how much planner can say that or state that.
Well, we'll address your, your issue when the time comes, okay? Anything else?
Can I ask, just for my clarification? When you say that there was another trailer there before this trailer that was put in, this Tuck's trailer for his parents, was there actually another trailer immediately there beforehand, or was it a number of years before earlier?
Well, I understand it was a number of years. But apparently, there was a misunderstanding in the question and understanding of the question, I don't know. But I don't think it was there immediately before he put this one in.
Normally, it would have to be there immediately.
That's my understanding.
And apparently, the understanding was misunderstood in that the, and that when it actually was, that it was years earlier. So, that's where the misunderstanding is.
I think so.
Okay.
Is there a timing?
There's a one-year time limit.
Say that again.
I think there's a one-year time limit.
We are seeing that.
So, how long are you saying, Greg, it's been out? There, there has not been one there?
At least seven or eight years.
I pulled a Google map on it before I went to the zoning commission, and it shows one there in 2005. And that's what I told them. I had no idea previously me buying the land, I didn't know when it was. June of 2005 was the last time that Google took a picture of one there.
And that was about the time that, I'll ask, I'll ask, 'cause that was my sister in the mobile home.
Any more comments about it? If not, the public hearing on the Tuck property is, is completed. And we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. And welcome all of you, and invite you to stay if you'd like. And this time, we'll have the pledge of allegiance, and Francis, we do have that faith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're glad to have Mr. Reverend Tommy Crump here with us tonight. He's gonna give our indication. Tommy?
Hi, guys. Heavenly Father, we just wanna thank you for this day. Lord, we just thank you for allowing us to live, God. Lord, we just ask you right now to just come in, Lord, and bless, Father, this meeting tonight. Lord, we ask you to touch each council member, member right now, God. Ask you to give them strength, give them wisdom, give them knowledge, God, in the great tasks that they have to do. Lord, dear Lord, I ask you to touch the mayor tonight. Ask you to just give her wisdom, Father, and just help her, to, Lord, just keep leading our city, Lord, the way she is right now. And Father, I ask, again, I ask you to, Lord, just bless our police community. Lord, ask you to bless our police officers, God, our chief master. Ask you to just give them knowledge, God. Ask you to take care of them as they serve our community, God, as they go to each person's house. Father, ask you to just put a heads around about, God, and protect them, Father. And Lord, again, I ask you to touch us citizens, God, each person that's here, not only here, but all those that are watching. Lord, ask you to help us, Lord, to abide by the laws, God. Ask you to just help us to do better, master. And Lord, again, we just ask you, Lord, just let this meeting be great, let it be good, let every person receive what they need from you, Lord. We just give you praise, honor, and glory, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Tony. We appreciate you being with us tonight. At this time, I recommend that we approve the meetings from the last meeting and also the special call meeting that we had on April 25th, 2012. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Scotty, do I have a second? All in favor? Second item on the agenda is to recommend the approval of the county's payable bills. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Francis?
All in favor?
Recommendation to advertise for bids to replace the canopy at the entrance of the E.T. Center's Junior Neighborhood Facilities Building. This is the rec center. If you've been over there lately and looked up, you'll see where that concrete is coming loose and falling, and it's a real danger. So, we want to go ahead and have that canopy taken down, that's at front entrance, and get somebody to replace it. So, do I have a motion to go ahead and advertise for bids to remove and replace that canopy at the rec center?
I'll make that motion.
Scotty, do I have a second?
I'll, sir.
All, all in favor?
Did we get some letter to tear that down?
Oh, no. We got an estimate on what it would cost to tear it down, but we hadn't got them. We're gonna advertise all of it, tear it down, and put it back. It's, the fourth item on the agenda is to, I recommend to approve this resolution number And this is a resolution for the authorizing the city of Hamilton and approving the application for the community enhancement funds to the state of Alabama, C.B.G. program. What this is, is the grant money that we're applying for, for the downtown revitalization. Do I have a motion? Francis, do I have a second? Matt David, all in favor? Recommendation to approve the resolution number 2012-57B as follows. This is pertaining to the same downtown revitalization. And what we're saying in this is that the city is prepared to pledge the needed funds, which is $2,330, $2,330,500 in local cash match for the project. Do I have a motion? Scotty, do I have a second? All, all in favor? Item number six is a recommendation to pay off police, the police car loan at Peoples Bank for $304,006.75. For those of you that were at the work session, we talked about some money that we had free up that we were able to pay off the fire truck this year. And we'll also have enough, we feel like, to pay off the police cars. So, I recommend that we go ahead and pay that off. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Francis, do I have a second?
Sir.
All, all in favor? We have a air conditioning unit that's taken out in the water department. And I've had someone come in and give us an estimate on what it would cost to replace it. And he gave us an estimate on a two-ton, and for $3,450. And we talked about it amongst ourselves and decided that we might need something a little larger. But I got back with Gary and had him come down here and look at it, Gary Nixon. And he said that two-ton was adequate, that actually would save more energy costs by going with that smaller unit than moving with, going with a larger one. So, we can go with a two-and-a-half ton. It'll cost us approximately $4,000 if we go with a two-and-a-half ton, if that's what you're gonna do. But I recommend we go on his recommendation, that's the two-ton. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Matt David, a second?
A second.
Scotty, all in favor?
That is a two-ton unit?
Two-ton.
There's a warranty?
Oh, yeah, it's got, it will have, I believe he said a five-year warranty on the parts and a year warranty on the labor.
Is this within your budget?
It, they have repairs in their budget, yes. Another item on the agenda is a sign for the spec building down at Industrial Park. We've never spent the money to put up a sign, and we got an estimate from McDonald's Signs. And this estimate would include actually placing the sign at the sign where we would want it. And his cost estimate is $600 for a, $600 for a four-foot wide, eight-foot high sign. This is a London sign with a post putting a, do I have a motion? Okay, Paul, second? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
April, all in favor? We are needing to purchase a vehicle for our fire department, for the fire department inspector, building inspector. He's driving an old police car that was worn out when we gave it to him. The gas company's got two vehicles that we're interested in. And I think we'll decide tomorrow who's gonna get the vehicles. They got forward for sale, but two of them, we could go either way. But after talking with Jerry itself on those, don't know which one we'll be able to get, because I'm new on that forward. And I just mentioned it to him last month, that we might be interested in one of those pickups. And so, somebody may have got in ahead of me to get the one that I wanted. But the 2006 model, we could get that at a cost of $7,038.33. But if we go with the 2007 model, it'll cost us $7,584.17. So, I would like permission, when I go to the meeting tomorrow, whichever one of those two vehicles are available, to go ahead and pledge the city's funds to pay for it.
What year was the 7,584?
It says 2007.
7,1.
I need a motion to that, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Second? I have, all in favor? We have a lot of old equipment. We got an old backhoe down into the shop that doesn't work. We got several confiscated police cars that, from the police department, vehicles and equipment and stuff that we're wanting to sell. And I believe the chief has already put his items that's been confiscated on the website to be sold. But what we'd want to do is get permission from the council to sell the other items that are for sale. I gave each of, a copy of that. There's some items from the rec department, woods mowers, and Ford tiller, and a 2001 Chevrolet Impala. And then the street department, there's a Massey Ferguson backhoe. That's what I was talking about that didn't work. And 1993 Chevrolet K-150. And then there's an old fire truck, a 1979 fire truck, that only has 19,575 miles on it. So, that, that truck's gonna be sold. So, I would like permission, if you give me permission, to go ahead and advertise that through this website in order that we might can get our best sale out of the equipment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
April, all in favor? We have the Kobe building that the city has taken over and is making type of sign right now. We leased it four years ago to a company called Legacy Docs. And they have taken really good care of the building. They keep it clean. We go over there periodically and follow on it. Their business has just suffered dramatically from the economic times that we've been going through. But Scott Hunt and I met with them this week, and they would like to renew their lease for another two years. And they pay us $3,750 a month. And we're asking them for updated financial information. We're also asking them for proof of insurance. And something else, Scott, that I asked him for, that I wrote down. The insurance and, oh, yeah. They're supposed to maintain the building. If anything, you know, tears up or breaks, they're supposed to repair and put it back in, in the condition it was in when they got it. And he's agreeing to all this. He's supposed to be bringing that information to me? At this time, I would recommend that we go ahead and lease that building to them for another two years, hoping that their business will pick up. And what they hope to do is buy the building. We set a price in the lease for them to buy the building, and if their business picks up, that's his plan. But at this time, they can still lease for another two years. Do I have a motion? Francis, second?
I'll, sir.
All, all in favor? We've just talked about in our work session about our ordinances, the city's ordinances, and how we're probably not prepared to enforce them the way that we would like to. And we'd like to sort of get in the 21st century and bring our, our codes up to date. I don't know how many ordinances we have, but we got a lot of them. There's a company called Muti Code. And they gave us all these references of people they do business with in the state of Alabama, where they go in and go through their minute books and actually pull the ordinances and compile those, give them to their attorneys. Their attorneys go through them and review them, make recommendations for changes, and then provide us, in this case, with two binded copies of an ordinance book. One that could be kept here at the City Hall and one that could be given to our attorney. These ordinances would also be placed on the webpage, where anybody could access them from their, their computer. I had wanted to do this, I've been wanting to do this for a long time, but I thought the cost was gonna be a lot more than what it actually turned out to be. We got our, our estimate from the company, and Jan and I sit down with a conference call with them. And it looks like our cost, the first year's gonna, I mean, the contract cost is gonna be $12,000. This can be spread out over a two-year period in four equal payments. At the end of the first year, I believe there's a $550- At the end of the first year, I believe there's a five hundred and fifty dollar a year fee. Jan, correct me, you got that copy that I penciled in on? Your fee to update our new ordinances or make changes as necessary. As we come to the council and make changes to ordinances, we would keep those. And once every six months or once every year, they would do update and give us new, uh, new pages for our books and update the, uh, the webpage. So I think it's a good deal. I think that's the first step in us getting to the point that we can enforce the ordinances that the city has in place. And I recommend that we enter into an agreement with Mini, Mini Code to do this for us. Do I have a motion?
Let me, uh, I haven't heard about this before. Did we table that and did you bring it back to the next meeting so that we could let that alone?
If that's what everybody wants to do.
I'll make the motion if we table it.
Do I have a second?
Now, does this Mini Code, is that the company that's gonna do this?
That's the name of the company that's gonna, that we're recommending do it. I'm sure there's other companies that do it.
This is, this is buried behind. This is how we found Gonnersville, uh, clean up ordinance. They have Mini Code, they have all their ordinances. A link on their, on the City of Gonnersville website that you can go to. This has got all of their ordinances on it.
Scott, did I understand her right, all of y'all, about the...
Did, did, I understand this lady was right to say that they would go back as far as the nineteen forties?
That's right.
As far back as, as there were regulations.
Right, our previous case was like nineteen forty-three, and they would go all the way back. Because we, we've got a book in there with ordinances, they go all the way back that far. And they would get back.
There's some of them, you know, obsolete, probably.
Yeah, some of them maybe, but we may have already had...
But this would just expedite the process, and we just gotta move with the times.
We may have had ordinances that we've made that have already been covered. But that, that's, 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 that's...
Well, I have a motion on the table to table the number twelve, Recommendation to Approve the Mini Code, do I have a second to table it?
Francis, second?
You second, you're pretty, all in favor? Okay, the next item on the agenda, I think we said we couldn't take up tonight, is the ordinance for the Tuck property to be resigned. Mr. Tuck, if you would bring that news description before the next council meeting, which will be the third Monday in this month. And we can get that word in changed.
Sure. We need to vote to table it.
We need to vote to table it.
Make a motion.
Okay, Scotty made a motion to table it. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, so that'll make number fourteen, all in favor?
Oh, I'd like to be part of to get today and to discuss with our attorney a legal matter of options that are pending on some litigation here. And I guess an order for today.
I lead a motion?
Yeah, involves good night characters, so... Can I make a motion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that would go into executive session.
Do I have a motion by Francis to go into executive session? Do I have a second? Scotty's second, all in favor? I have a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? At this time, we're concluding our meeting, and we've got some visitors here. Is there anything anybody would like to say?
Absolutely.
Mr. Johnson, I'll give you three minutes.
Okay, let's start with this. How many of you council members were contacted by the mayor before the decision was made to shut the Riving House down? Before? I know you were there at the second meeting. Why can't I get a copy of the alleged violations?
You have a copy.
No, ma'am, I do not have a copy. I have a copy of generalized things. I have not been told specifically about the wiring, where the wiring problems are at.
Did you get a copy with the pictures?
I didn't get any pictures. All right, Tim Wright told me right down there in the office that he had to have that report back to you the same day that they came down there to do this floor plan. Is he telling the truth?
I told you on the phone today, we're not getting in an argument over that.
I'm not looking for an argument, I'm asking the question.
I'm gonna answer your question in one simple statement. I told you it was a safety issue, a safety issue, that people's lives were at risk with them living and sleeping in that building. And this is one statement I'm gonna read to you. Due to the number and severe violations, it is recommended that you have a licensed architect evaluate the property for what it is going to be used for according to the two thousand six International Building and Fire Code. Until code violations are corrected, this property will remain under the official order to immediately evacuate. So that spells it out. You get your person in there, let them tell you what you need to do to bring it up to code. That's your responsibility.
All right, if you were concerned about the fire safety of the Riving House, why did we get inspected two years after the Selma fire? Two years.
Oh, I think he's being argumentative, Scott. I don't think we have to sit here and listen to this.
Yeah, it's a respect, it was investigated, and when it was, they found those violations, and that's all that's important right now.
You heard Tim Wright, oh, you heard him too, stating that he had been on the emergency call several months ago at the Riving House, and he noticed some things then that should have been reported or at least indicated. Been brought to attention, but he didn't follow up on them what he should have. Why wasn't I notified then if you had the fire marshal in the building and he noticed things?
Can you answer that question? Because I didn't know it until it brought my attention after the, after the inspection.
All right. Is Tim, is Tim Wright gonna be reprimanded for dereliction?
No.
No. Oh, well, let's see here. Baron Williamson, in the meeting that Paul was in, told me I would have to have an architect to correct everything in there. Now you're saying it's a recommendation?
No, if you want to fix it to where it can be approved, you're gonna have to have an architect tell you what needs to be done to bring it up to code. That's my understanding, Scott.
How could, how could Baron tell me the whole building? I'm sorry?
Has to pass the state inspection, that's what you said. Okay.
All right, how could, how could Baron Williamson tell me the whole building would have to be rewired, rewired, after only looking at the hallway and down in the basement? He didn't go into any of the rooms? He didn't take cover off the panels? And what gives the fire chief the right to tell me I can't store vinyl siding or carpet in a storage area under the apartment because someone might start a fire there? He couldn't start a fire anywhere else?
Anybody here?
Make a motion, John?
Do I have a motion? Adjourned, I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?